Welcome to the Wednesday, August 28th, 2024, meeting of the Board of Education of the Castro Valley Unified School District. I would like to see if there are any motions there to approve the agenda.
I'll move approve the agenda.
There is an amendment, eight L is amended, policy for one six one two.
Would you like to restate your motion?
Yes, I would like to move approval of the agenda as amended to reflect change to board policy. Four one six one point two, which is part of our consent calendar, item eight L.
Thank you for the detail. Do we have a second?
And I'll second that.
Excellent. Trustee Raymond. Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, it passes for two zero. Ms. Kair, have we any public comments regarding closed session items? As we have no public comment regarding closed session items, we shall now re- We are back from closed session. The Board did not take any action in closed session. With that said, before we move on, I would like to share a brief statement on behalf of the entire Board and Superintendent Amadi. Specifically, all of us were extremely disheartened to learn that a former teacher, someone entrusted to work with students, was allowed to play away multiple felony counts of lewd and inappropriate conduct with a minor, and as reported in the local media, may not end up actually serving any jail time for his admitted criminal conduct. Sadly, this is yet another example of how school districts can work with vigilance and integrity to protect student safety and well-being. But our court system fails to provide what we believe to be sufficient justice. For background, a district site administrator reported last year what they considered to be a teacher's suspicious behavior while engaging with students. In response, we took immediate action to place the teacher on leave, engaged law enforcement, and initiated the process of investigating so that action could be taken based on the facts and the law. The teacher's conviction last week reflects the resolution of the court's work. The Board believes that working with children is a profound responsibility and one that should be taken seriously not only by school district employers, but by the justice system, who should insist that all are held meaningfully accountable to the proper and respectful behavior with our children. Thank you. Let us now go to trustee Whitaker, who will read our mission statement, which is found as part of our strategic strategic directions. Yeah. Oh, yes. We did not, I know, we did not take any action in those sections. Yeah.
Thank you, President Kuziak. We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you. Now let me provide some public comment instructions. The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a request to speak blue form on the back table or via the Google form online at www.cv.k12.ca.us forward slash public comment forward slash and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to thirty minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment, but neither can discuss or take action on issues presented. With that, let us go to Superintendent Amadi for her district report.
Thank you. All right, so this has been a great two and is it two and a half weeks? Three, almost three. It's wonderful to have our our students back and, you know, our campuses are full of just life and excitement. And our students are doing a great job as always and our staff. So we've been, you know, busy visiting schools, visiting classrooms, kind of getting to know the lay of the land with new, you know, new programs and things like that. We also start actually going to parent teacher organizations, PTAs and PTOs with trustee and last week, was it last week, on Thursday, President Kuziak and I were at Stanton and they had quite a few people. It was wonderful. Just great presentation. So it's always nice to visit and see what people are doing and what PTAs are working on. We also had our parent leadership council, which is once a month we meet with parents from each school, the parent leaders from each school. At that meeting, we also shared a lot of information about the reading program, the elementary report card, which is really just, it's very informative because before, for example, if you looked at your child's report card, you would only see how they're performing in general and now it is actually by each standard so that people can focus on whatever needs to be worked on. We also talked about purchasing and all of that stuff. So it was a great meeting to share information. We also had a wonderful affinity group event for African American families at the park, which was, I think we had over a hundred twenty, two, two hundred? I know, there was a lot more. It was wonderful. And I know, I know trustee Howard and President Kuziak were able to join us for a little bit, but it's just a wonderful event. We've been visiting schools, recognizing our team members for the years of service. We still have a couple more Castro Valley High School and Independent and and I believe those two are the only ones left. So we'll be going there thanking our staff, you know, just sharing our gratitude for their service. And then I just wanted to say a couple of things about our partner organization. CVEF had their first meeting for this year. They are looking at dates for the for the end of the year education kind of event where they raised money this last May or April. They raised twenty thousand dollars for art and music and in the past it was for wellness centers and and social emotional support of students. So they have their, they will be announcing that, you know, just soon. They also have grants in for our students that they have available. And CVAF, which is the Arts Foundation, they've really focused on doing, on bringing in programs that focus that are more, you know, just like young people would want to see. So they've got like a magic show where kids can go and a couple of other things. So they're trying to really do things for the adult members of the community as well as children. So as a part of that effort, we also have a film that we're featuring the apology on the September seventeenth and a panel. And that said, we always want to thank our partner organizations because they do a lot for our, our school district. And, and then a couple of things that are happening. Castro Valley Fall Festival is on September seventh and eighth. The Chamber of Commerce, I believe, said like months, months ago, they were already booked and they have a waiting list. So that's pretty exciting. They had lots and lots of vendors who wanted to participate and we will be there as well on the seventh and the eighth. So come and visit our booth with tattoos. Yeah. And then standards-based grading using equitable practices. We have another parent workshop and it's virtual on September ninth at six to seven thirty and this is being sent out to families and, and community members so that they can click on this link to join and hear the conversation with Joe Feldman. And that's it. Thank you.
I'm so excited you brought up spring into education because guess what happened? I was at Creekside the other day and I was approached by the parent who won my cookies. That clearly put that fundraiser over the top. And she said her baker friend was so impressed by them that she's been trying to figure out the recipe. So I am on the hook to make another batch of cookies.
Well, you got to keep all eighteen.
Right.
And yeah.
That was, that was a funny night. Thank you for your update. So next we have updates from the California School Employees Association and our Castro Vala Tejas Association. Ms. Kair, is anyone from CESA? No one is from the California School Employees Association. Ms. Kair, is anyone from CBT A here? No one is from CBT A. So item number seven is public comment for items not on the agenda. Ms. Kair, we have no comments for items not on the agenda. Our next item is the consent agenda in which the Board consider approving multiple items with one motion. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have one motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Trustee Raymond, trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
Yes.
And then I am a yes, the consent agenda is passed. Yes.
I just wanted to mention that the, as a part of the Board policies four one six one point two, our two board members who are at the Board Policy Subcommittee discussed and we did add this statement at the end after it says on the, talks about the government code. It says if the employee is on another type of leave at the time and reproductive loss event or chooses to take another type of leave immediately following a reproductive loss event, then the reproductive leave shall be completed within three months of the end of, of that other leave. And it says government code, we added, this also applies to pregnancy termination.
I want to thank the Subcommittee for including that language in support of women's right to have bodily autonomy and make decisions. Thank you. Our next item is nine A, the Castro Valley Unified School District Behavioral Support and Safety Presentation. I preemptively want to just thank staff for working on this all summer. I know that this is something that came directly from us. We really wanted to have a presentation to better understand this. So bring it on. Let's, let's, let's have this, this, this information.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to use the mic and muffle my voice because I typically don't need it. Good evening to the Board, our Superintendent, our Executive Cabinet, family, staff, students watching, participating from afar and here. I wanted to start by introducing our district Student Services Team, inclusive of our Coordinator of Student Services, Ms. Fong Lai, our Coordinator of Behavioral Health, Ms. Marion Meadows, and I am our School District's Director of Student Services and Title Nine Coordinator, Nick McMaster. So we have a presentation prepared. We're going to cover a lot of topics that we could go much deeper in, but because of the complexity of how safety in the school district as it relates to behavior and a lot of our initiatives are intertwined, we, we're going to give you a broad look at a number of things and, and we're excited to do so. So we've constructed the presentation in, in these key areas. We're going to look at our, our systems and approaches, outcomes at a glance, a little bit about how we allocate resources and staffing, some, some key community partnerships and what is, what's new and exciting for this school year.
Hello and good, hello and good evening. When we talk about safety, it is inclusive of physical and emotional safety. I'll be reviewing our behavioral systems and approaches which are foundational and preventative work. We'll look at our positive behavioral interventions and supports, our anti-bullying and nondiscrimination policies and also how we are responding to discipline with supports. Creating and cultivating school culture and climate sets the foundation for how we want to be in our school community. Castro Valley Unified School District implements many preventative and proactive ways to set up a positive school climate, culture and climate, including an intentional focus of creating more welcoming, inclusive and equitable spaces for all our students. All our schools practice PBIS or Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports. And what PBIS contains are the following core elements. And so PBIS uses common language around behavior. All our schools have matrices that outline school community behavior agreements. And this communicates how we want students to be and how we want them to show up at school. And it supports in the prevention of challenging and unwanted behaviors. This also ensures that our staff are consistent in their communication and using common language to communicate safe and positive behavior expectations of all our students. PBIS also defines expectations in areas throughout the school, such as hallways, playground and the cafeteria. You, you'll often see signs when you're walking through our schools of how we are asking our young people to show up. And PBIS teacher teaches and provides positive reinforcement strategies and celebrates their successes. When students do something well, we want to be sure to praise them. This will help them feel good about themselves and also their accomplishments. And PBIS uses a school-wide information system. It's something that we call SWISS and we track behaviors so that we can know how to inform what we need to reteach and how we can have preventative educational decision-making. And then PBIS is also a system focused on prevention of persistent and or significant behaviors. And it really promotes in just creating a positive school culture. So we have policies in place to affirm our stance on unwanted behaviors and specifically discriminatory behaviors. Our Board recently approved updated anti-discrimination and harassment board policies and administrative regulations. All our students belong here and they have a right to feel safe and welcomed. And we take bullying and discrimination complaints very seriously. And our commitment is to have a prompt and consistent response by all our staff members. As an example, our district staff worked with our district leadership teams here in this room on scenarios on how to interrupt and address hateful language and behaviors. And we want to ensure that all our staff have the awareness and skills to be able to address all discriminatory acts. And additionally, our student-to-student harassment, intimidation and discrimination in schools are responded to promptly and thoroughly. So there are varying expectations of what discipline looks like. Procedures for suspensions and expulsions are highly codified by the state. So the California Department of Education sent out a memorandum in September twenty twenty-three and it states that we should be responsive to discipline. So alongside that, there are laws and expectations on when we're supposed to suspend and expel, but only and when it's necessary and as a last resort. And this memo from CDE reiterates this and also reminds schools that we should address behavior in a way that's responsive and appropriate. This aligns with the direction of our discipline philosophy and approach and safety is our priority. And although times, there are times that we may have to move towards suspension or recommendation for expulsion, our approach will always be to appropriately address the harm that has been done. If you look at the word discipline, it is derived from the Latin word, which means desced, which means to learn. And so we really want to go back and think about discipline being an opportunity to teach and learn. And it can be supportive and it can be positive. Discipline does not always have to be punitive.
So I am going to briefly go over a few pieces of information from, from much larger data polls for the Board. And so what we saw at year end twenty-two, twenty-three is actually a year-over-year reduction in the number of, of students being suspended. So there's, there's something I just want to kind of make sure to highlight is, is there's at least two figures we're commonly looking at in terms of total numbers. We're looking at the number of students suspended. We're also looking at the number of suspensions. And so we saw, I don't, I don't have stated here the, the reduction in the number of suspensions, but I think it's really key to see that we have a significant statistical decrease in the number of students demonstrating maybe some of these more serious behaviors. In the last two years in a row, we've had, we've had reductions in suspension, which has been, which has been a, you know, a, a very positive thing. We do see a big opportunity area because when we drill into our suspensions and we look at, we look at comparisons of, of students, we see that our Black, African American, our Hispanic, Latinx students are disproportionately excluded from school with exclusionary discipline. And so what that means, just to be really clear, is, is that we see these, these two groups of students suspended at higher rates than their enrollment, using enrollment as a baseline. We're seeing, we're seeing a, a statistical variance compared to other student groups. It's a big opportunity area. But going back to our reduction in the number of students suspended, that's really, it's a twofold positive. It's one that we're finding more educational opportunity. We're finding, we're expanding our resources to be able to teach, reteach students about expectations around behavior, but we're also seeing less of these significant behaviors being demonstrated by students, which speaks to our preventative work, our preventative systems around, around behaviors and being out in front of it. One other set of data, just briefly referencing, is our California Healthy Kids Survey data. So just saying, let's say, assuming the audience is unfamiliar with this survey, this is a survey we, we conduct with all staff, all parents, and then select grade levels. We conduct this survey, survey every two years. It's a very large survey. It asks a lot of questions and we, we drill into those that are, are important to us on various topics. And so this last school year, we conducted the survey in, in the late fall, early winter. The prior survey had been two years prior in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And so what we noticed is a decrease in some of these really important areas in our student experience and the culture and climate of campus as they're reporting to us that we're seeing decreases in cyberbullying, which we know is, is a huge issue, not just locally, but nationally for students, especially our adolescent students. Harassment and students experiencing social emotional distress. Point out to the Board that I know I don't mention seventh grade in the second item. That's because it, it stayed flat over, over the, the two-year comparison. But it was not, it was not a, you know, it was not a negative increase, so to speak. I'll pass it over to Marion.
Thank you. Good evening. So it's not, we want to sort of maybe not draw causation, but, but maybe open up for a reflection that we're seeing decreases in negative behaviors. And I'm going to be talking a little bit about the increases in positive adults on campus. And as much as maybe our teenagers say they don't need to, they don't need to listen to us or they, they're doing their own thing. They need positive adults. All kids need positive adults and the research shows that they really just need one positive adult in their life to show lifelong resiliency. So we're going to talk about some of those positive adults here. Something that can be, we talk a lot about the excellent teaching that happens at Castro Valley. When we talk about, talk to the students about that being a major, major part of our job, the most important part of our job is safety, period. Every adult on the campus is responsible for student safety. And so we have very specific teams of adults that are, their job is to make sure that the facility is safe, that the community is safe on the inside. And it's more than just locking and unlocking gates. It's actually about the relationships they have with students. It's, are you, they encouraging you to get to class? Are they encouraging you or praising you when you get out of class, welcoming students, making sure they're safe when they leave? These are really critical people. And the camp, the campus safety teams have experienced through the investment of this board an increase in four point five FTE during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and those folks have settled into the campuses. And this represents a major investment, not only in, again, the, the folks that hold the, the children safe in the facility and at events, but also in the relationships that, that they're having with students and families. And they're also often members of the community. So they're our neighbors. So they're a really critical piece of, of keeping our campuses safe and healthy. The other staff that we'll talk about tonight is not unfamiliar to the Board. I, I get to talk about these awesome people all the time. But we have different, different levels and different kinds of wellness staff, but I'm going to talk about our social work team right now. We have eleven social workers. Half of them are licensed clinical social workers and almost all of them are full-time staff. They're spread across all of our schools. There's the social workers at the adult school. There's social workers working with the TKs. So it is definitely a continuum of care and the, and the social workers that work at each level partner every spring to make sure they're welcoming the kids up to the next level through our step-up programs and other types of processes that help make sure those kids get a warm handoff to the next setup. And these social workers supervise social work interns. We just last week welcomed eight new social work interns from local universities, Cal State East Bay, Cal State Long Beach and UC Berkeley. So every year we bring in an amazing crew of folks that are able to connect with kids. And so these two teams are critical, not, and they're not separate. We want to be thinking about, we think about them as part of an overall safety team in addition to other staffing groups on campus. But they work, the social workers and our safety teams work very closely together to make sure that we're supporting students and that we have eyes on the kids that really need to be brought forward for support. So the, again, another really important staffing group, and I specifically want to thank the Board for continuing to prioritize funding for these positions. I know it's every year, it's, it's, this is the hardest part probably of being on, on a board, but these positions have been prioritized year after year and we want to say a special thank you.
Can I ask just a wee little question? Are the ASWs, are they paired with the LCSW so they can earn their hours so they can get licensed?
Firstly, so the students are the ones who are in graduates, they're graduate students, they're paired with, they can be paired with an MSW that isn't necessarily gaining hours for its licensure or with a licensed person. But I'm, I'm licensed, so I'm over that team. The licensed people also have students. So there's heavy, heavy supervision and support and training. They, we, and fun. We, we make it fun, I promise. Yeah, great question.
My, my wife is an LCSW and so I'd like finding a supportive job that would help her get those hours and oftentimes be difficult. So it's nice to hear that.
Yeah, yeah, we're able to, it's a, it's a career pathway that we hope that kids learn that it's good and fun and a really important way to work with young people and families and then they can move up into their education. Yeah, thank you. Okay. And so as I mentioned, Mr. Kuziak, you mentioned training and this is something that we take really seriously across the board, not just with these two staffing groups. I'll talk a little bit about the two staffing groups that we mentioned before, our security, our safety, security teams and our social workers and interns. We, that, both, both sets of those, those staffing groups, we work really hard to train in trauma-informed responses, compassionate dialogue. I know that you've heard about probably as it has been an amazing set of training that all the teachers got, all the staff classified. All kinds of folks in our, in our community received compassionate dialogue training. Again, those pieces specifically around youth mental health, first aid, it was a county offered training that our security safety teams and social workers receive. And then across the board, as you know, our district is very seriously committed to anti-discriminatory training, in particular this or our anti-hate language initiative, where every, again, every family, every student, every staff member is receiving training on how to interrupt hate language in this, in particular this year around hate, hate language around racialized hate language, right? So, so being very specific about interrupting if we hear things that are considered racialized or racial hate language. So those pieces are, every staff gets that, but in particular, we, we really are trying to make sure that our security teams and social work teams, because they're so, because they're in contact with kids all day, every day, that they're really highly trained to not just interrupt or intervene or stop things from happening, but to really encourage students as they move forward. So two really important staffing groups, but as part of a much larger vision for moving our district forward into being as welcoming and inclusive and equitable spaces as we can make. So thank you.
So I'm going to jump- So I'm going to jump back in to talk about some community partnerships, not all of them, but a handful of really key ones. Starting with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office, a really important and strong partner to the Castro Valley Unified School District and the community. We wanted to make sure everyone was aware that we have regular partner meetings with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. We meet, we meet here monthly, or we go visit and, and meet at the Eden Township substation as we have. We have a formal partnership, we have a formal agreement actually around event supervision. You know, when we're talking about, we're talking about the school day and we're talking about all the staffing and, and some of the systems already in this presentation. You know, we have a lot of really, really good safe structures in place within the school day on the school footprint. And then when we open up to events, we, we open up our facilities oftentimes to the community where we don't have the same authority. We don't have the same reach. And so it's, it's so beneficial to have the Alameda County Sheriff's Office at specific events where we are responsible for our students, we're responsible for an educational activity, but now we're, we're, you know, trying to integrate that activity with the general public where we're, that's, that's really not, not our domain, and it is the domain oftentimes of the sheriff's office. So it's a great partnership. They also are very supportive with educational opportunities for our students and families. We feel very thankful that they were able to get the Sheriff's Explorer Program back off the ground this last year. We have approximately 12 students participating, and we know that that number is going to grow. It's a, it's a really phenomenal way for our students to explore law enforcement work if they have an interest. We're also currently working with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office and the Castro Valley Library to put together an internet safety workshop and presentation, not just for parents and families, but also for students. And we're picking a focused grade level of students to supplement other things that are out there. Our, our school district has a really good system around digital citizenship and, and lessons that are available to students. And our adult school always does a pretty phenomenal job of offering parent educational opportunities. So we're working together right now, being responsive to some data points we're seeing, including from our California Healthy Kids survey results about, you know, what, what people are concentrated on, what people want more resources about. And then, you know, some of the other ways, there's lots of ways we partner, but another way we partner is, you know, actually like we, we sent a message out this summer because as soon as school ended, some of our, our youngsters were having fun with these, these toy gel guns, these Orbeez.
I saw that at the, I saw them at the Village.
Yeah, so, well, and it's, it's, it just really speaks to our partnership and, and, you know, how we work together because on that end, they're getting calls and we have, we have a communication base, you know, assuming it's our students and an ability to quickly get messages so that, that we could divert that, you know, and on the other end, we have, you know, we have them showing up and, you know, staying present on a corner, let's say, maybe a corner that's frequented a lot during lunch breaks and there's some loitering taking place. And so they're, they're standing there to prevent that from taking place. So there's just, there's a lot of formal ways and a lot of subtle ways that we're working together. And what I want to, what I want to say that I, that I didn't then think to include, so I'm glad I'm highlighting this, is that, you know, we do have, when we talk about the role of the sheriff's office in our school district, and we talk about these areas where we don't really have authority or jurisdiction, and then ways where they don't really have the ability to step into a space. We work really well in those spaces. And then the spaces where we have to include them, there, there are legal, legally required rather situations where we have to include the Alameda County Sheriff's Office based on a behavioral situation or, or some type of emergency or concern. And we do a really, that's part of what we discuss at our regular partner meeting is making sure we're really clear about what that looks like and going forth to train our staff, and they've gone forth to train their staff, and it's been very, very positive. This will be much more brief than the last slide, but we, we, we have a very robust behavioral health team built out as Ms. Meadows described through our wellness center, our social work staff, but we also benefit from partners. And some of these, some of these groups we, we contract with, we do like a cost share or we get grant support. And so the three that I, the three that I have on the board, Eden Counseling Wellness Together and APA Health represent three different models of, of counseling, social emotional support, mental health support for students. And so I'll highlight APA Health because we're really excited about this resource. We're piloting it this year for a limited cross-section of high school students, but it is more of a mentoring approach to, to healthcare. So we have students, students we're trying to reach. They may not go knock on a wellness center door. You know, they may not walk into willingly into a one-on-one counseling session, but they definitely are much more receptive to the idea of linking up with a mentor and going through some, some normed resources and then entering into a dialogue that essentially is a mental health support. So really excited to see how that resource is going to play out this year. And then just as an example, when we talk about non-exclusionary responses to student behavior, we're not talking about expecting less, you know, from students. What we're talking about is maintaining the same high expectations for students and also being human, you know, checking in on ourselves about all the mistakes we've made in our lifetimes and being very thankful for the opportunity to move forward from them and learn from them. So we're not talking about, we're not talking about not addressing things. We're talking about a different approach to addressing things. One phenomenal partner we have is the Eden Area Youth Forum. Once a month in this very room, we conduct forums for referred students. Oftentimes the students referred to this tool, this resource are students who have committed an infraction that is close to or around significant enough where it could be a suspension consideration. This can be used in place of, this can be used in concert with exclusionary discipline, but it is a phenomenal tool. And it plays out a lot like a peer, you know, a peer, I don't want to say a court case because there's not a defense and a prosecution, but there's definitely a peer panel. And, you know, students engaging with their peers, having to think and articulate about what they've done, hearing back from others and, and reflecting on their impact. We're building accountability. And we see it statistically. We see that we do not have repeat offenses, oftentimes from students engaging in this type of, this type of intervention in response to behavior.
And here's a very important question, which are next steps. So what next? What to look forward to and what to look upward to? That's always important. As we're working towards, you know, building community, creating belonging, we have to also talk about rebuilding, recreating, but also restoration. Being restorative is such an important part of how we respond to discipline with supports. There may be misconceptions about restorative practices and how that's been carried forward, but restorative practices is a very structured and systemized way in which we approach harm when it's done. And when it's done well and with integrity, it does offer accountability and responsibility and a way to make amends with each other. And so when we're talking about community, everyone has a place here and we should allow for that to happen. We, we shouldn't throw students away. And so restorative practices really provides opportunities for the harm to be addressed. Again, adults, we need to build capacity within our adults in order to facilitate and also guide our students and anyone who's been harmed, but also students being able to take ownership and accountability for the harm. This year we've invested in training for administrators in order to know what restorative practices is and then look at how that looks throughout their school sites. And with accountability, high accountability, we also have to make sure that there's high communication. So it's really relational. It's about building relationships and mending relationships. And it's really continuing to push high expectations for everyone who is involved. So restorative practices also addresses how someone returns to school. So what is, what is the safe return? And they're most effective in schools where leadership and educators are trained and implementing them. And so it's not just something we do, but we, it really has to be something that we are and how we are in community with each other. So as we, for this year, as we build capacity, not just about what restorative practices is, we're really building the skills and capacity within our adults and on how we're holding that and how we're carrying that through. So we're also expanding our resources for staff and improving our MTSS or our multi-tiered system of support. We're learning and identifying our strengths and our areas of growth and looking at different staffing roles and wanting to make sure that we're responsive to student needs as they change. We want to make sure we're using data to inform practices. We've expanded our data tools in our student information system. And we're using more regular climate surveys to include student voice as well. Our multi-tiered system of supports really is a progressive model of how we're intervening and how we're addressing behaviors, academic, mental health at tier one, two, and three. And so really making sure we're strengthening what our strategies are and our approaches at each of those tiers. We want to be able to build as an inclusive education model as possible so that all students are being responded appropriately without moving towards that exclusionary model. And then with the use of California Healthy Kids Survey and Kelvin, we want to make sure that we're looking at our data continuously and doing an inquiry cycle of what does our data tell us? What does it inform us? What do we need to implement and try to practice so we can address those? And again, become better as, as a district, as we serve our students and families. So I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to present, and we're happy to respond to any questions that the board or the executive cabinet may have.
Thank you for a really fantastic presentation. We have some questions. Let's go first to Vice President Dolly Adams.
So that was a wonderful presentation. Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention a little bit about having, when I worked at Redwood and seeing really how our campus security, particularly Leonard Pleasant, how he interacted with the kids way before there was any kind of disruption or anything happening. All the kids knew him. They respected him. And then if something did happen, they listened to him. They listened to him because they did respect him, know who he was. He would joke around with them. He was, you know, still, still keeping his, his, you know, what, what his position was, but was always very pleasant to be around. And I know he's not the only one of our campus security people who are like that. We have great people who do that job and they make our campuses a lot safer. Then of course, as you know, I was in a CE class, so I think I was maybe one of the first people on this campus to do restorative circles, even before it was around our entire district. And we would do those too, you might call preemptively, right before anything happened, just to make a circle and pass the little, I, I think we had a, you know, a little stuffed animal and stuff that we passed around. And everybody would say something and they didn't have to. If they didn't want to, they could just pass it. But we had that practice before we needed to restore something that, you know, may, may have caused a problem or offended someone or that sort of thing. And I guess there was one other one. Oh yeah, Eden Youth Forum, like trying not to suspend kids when possible, you know, unless it's something in the ed code, is really a great idea and having their peers talk to them and work it out. So you guys are doing a great job with really security, counseling, social workers. It's so different from when I started teaching to what things are and how they work now, and it's so much better.
I just also wanted to add that we are expanding that as well to our students. And so we're also looking at pure-led circles and pure-led restorative practices. Knowing that our young people are wise and resourceful and can also do that.
Do that, yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
This work is really important work. I know that we say this a lot, and it takes a lot of coordinated efforts, a lot of time, blood, sweat, and tears. But I want to, I'm going to quote you, Mr. McMaster. The statement that you said dispels a lot of misinformation about this work. And we're going to have to coin it somewhere and put it in a book or somewhere, but it says, we are not, you said this, we are not talking about not addressing issues. We are talking about addressing them differently. What hasn't worked in our society which disproportionately affects other communities is not fair or equitable or the right thing to do. And I love to see this coordinated effort of our very smart staff, working with our very smart teachers and our very smart kids and community to drive outcomes, positive outcomes that lead to better lives, better social and emotional physical health. But it's also by leading by example. We are teaching our staff and our teachers the appropriate, healthy way to address issues. And so I just, I'm always in awe of your work. I'm always appreciative of your work and thank you so much for everything that you do.
Trustee Raymond.
I think just to sort of dovetail on trustee Whitaker's comments, I had, I had taken specific note here of the decrease in bullying and the decrease in harassment, the reduction in suspension, the decrease in social emotional distress. And it seems that, you know, this, I don't want to call it an experiment because it's clearly not an experiment. It's, it's data-based and it's, it's evidence-based. But this, this decision that's been made by our district to, to, to really invest in these tools as our safety tools and as our, you know, social wellbeing tools, they're working. They're absolutely working. And we've clearly got a good partnership established with ACO. We've got good partnership established between our staff and our students. And I would, I would, I would say that, you know, that extends, you know, not just from like the security and, and safety staff, but, you know, through, through our teachers and our support staff in all of our schools. I actually was just at Vanoye a couple of weeks ago where my kids had attended elementary school many years ago, and Mr. Stephant, who's the, the custodian, he popped in the office and was like, hey, Miss Sarah, great to see you. How are the boys? And remembered all these stories about them and like shared with me a couple of moments where he intervened with one of my kids, you know, because he was supposed to be in his classroom and wasn't, you know? And I think that we have, I think that we are really inspiring a school culture in our district in which everyone's doing their best to look out for our kids. And I, I love that. I appreciate that. I appreciate the effort and energy that you guys are all putting into it. And I'll be really interested in seeing over time how things like, you know, our current real push towards interrupting anti-hate language and behavior, like I'm, I'm going to be very curious to see the, the, the proof of, of, of that work, you know, down the road. So, yeah. Good on you. Thank you.
Trustee Howard.
Well, a very nice report, all kinds of great work. We're all sold on this. I mean, even before you said the first words, we all believe everything you say and because it's the right thing to do. But I do have a question for you. You know, I've been in the school district now as a parent and a board member for not quite 25 years. And there's one part of what you said tonight that is still stubbornly resistant to change. When are we going to be able to and what can we do? And can we have, ever have any hope to get our Black and Brown students not in so much trouble as, why are they disproportionately getting suspended? It's the same now as it was 25 years ago. Maybe there are fewer suspensions. We still haven't beat that and I, you know, it's frustrating. And what do you guys think about that?
As Ms. Rashid, she often reminds us, systems do exactly what they're designed to do. And so when we talk about exclusionary discipline, we're working off a codified, you know, set of expectations. You know, I, it's a complex response. We have to dismantle the system. We work actively. We, we talk and, and train all the time. And, and pull our hair out, drive ourselves nuts trying to make an impact. But we, we have to do a better job of understanding what we're, what is safe, what is unsafe, and then where we have opportunities to learn. And what is unsafe is very few behaviors. Ultimately, it's very, very few behaviors. And everywhere in between. And everywhere in between is the opportunity ground. And so I don't want to be misquoted here as saying that, like you could oversimplify this. And I'm saying that suspensions for substance use are, are the culprit behind this disproportionality. But for example, substance use is an area that we talk about a lot because what self-harm can look like, what self-harm can look like in different populations of students can be substance use, for example. So maybe a population of student has the wellness center, they have the resources and they're accessing them. And that's making an impact positively on exclusionary discipline and outcomes. But we're still maybe having to send kids home because of, because of substances, for example. So it's just, we have to explore these things and understand where we have, we can find resources, create resources to try to support the learning so that we're not, we're not in these, these showdowns about, you know, decision-making.
Yeah. I want to, I want to add a few things about that. I think we have to recognize that we have fewer suspensions and expulsions. But that discrepancy is still there of our African-American and Latino students being suspended, not just here, everywhere. Fighting against racism is deep work and it takes a long time. But that's the kind of work we're doing. Not one meeting do we have here with our administrators or one of our trainings that we don't talk about anti-racism because to be honest, when a four-year-old walks through our classrooms, what they look like unfortunately still matters in the way we behave towards them. Because it's one thing for us to keep saying it. We've got to change people's hearts. We have to change people's attitude towards kids' behaviors. And we also have to think about what we feel is appropriate and not appropriate. And is it culturally commending or not? Oftentimes, you know, not, not as much anymore, obviously in our district. But there are places where if a kid says anything, you're out, right? And that's why we have to be really careful about when we say, these are our rules, that we still look at these kids as human beings who make mistakes and we have to, we have to work on it. So I just have to say, anti-racist work doesn't take one year to, it takes, well, look back, right? 1698 to now, we just have to keep at it. We have to hold ourselves accountable. One of the things we just did, that Ms. Rashidi just did yesterday with our, was it Thursday or Monday? Monday, we did with all 55 people here, we practiced scenarios that have happened here since the beginning of the year with hate language. In the past three and a half weeks, after all the work we've done, right? And we have the complex. It's not like, it's obviously it's better, but we practiced. Why did we practice? Because we needed to practice, what do you actually say when you see that, when you hear that? It's not easy having courageous conversations and conversations about race and not, you're not allowed to say that are not easy. So we have to equip our staff and ourselves to do the right thing. So we're gonna keep doing it. And I agree with you, Carrie. It's been like this forever and there has to be a time. So when people say, why do you pay so much attention to that? Right? It's not that we don't pay attention to everything else. It's just because we still struggle with our African-American and Latino students feeling welcome, supported all the time. And it's, it's really a part of the whole society. And I think we have to be really careful even more so right now during elections because things change. The atmosphere, the culture changes. So we just have to really think about that. I'm gonna hand it over to, to if you want to add anything. And then I want to say a few things about this team and the kind of work we're doing before we end the presentation. Yeah, yeah, question.
The only thing that I would add is that practice makes better. And we're not looking for perfection, but we really believe that, I mean, what, what our staff has told us, what teachers have told us is, I'm, and what we're, we're establishing a safe environment where people feel comfortable practicing. Because they have said, teachers have said, some, some of our administrators have said, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure how to interrupt that and do it well so that when we do that interruption, we end up on the other side and it's still a good place where we can be in community together. And so that, that takes a lot of hard work and effort because we're working against stereotypes, ICEs, racism that has existed for hundreds of years. And impacting that, turning that around and working against what is the status quo is incredibly challenging. But I will say that I'm in a district that is up for the challenge and we're working on it every day. Because we want to see that disproportionality, that disproportionality change. We want to see it improved and we're working on it.
Yeah, I just, and I'll hand it over to you. Our hope, my hope is young people. And that's why I am so proud of our teachers for doing what they're supposed to be doing in classrooms right now. And I want you to know, they're gonna get pushed back. We already know. When they talk about why it's important not to be racist, why it's important to look at history, why it's important to understand it so we don't repeat it, we're going to get people say, you're, you're doing this and you shouldn't be doing this. So I just want to commend you for supporting us in that work and commend our teachers and, and schools for doing this amazing work. Because the only way to change what's happened is to change our, to, to not tell our young people what to do, to teach them critical thinking, to teach them humanity so that they don't do what we have done for decades and centuries. That's our hope. That's our hope.
Hi there. I just wrote some questions down here and I just kind of want to, want to thank you for, for being here tonight. I was just reflecting on, I grew up in one of those places where you walk into the principal's office and you'd see their form of punishment. You'd see their paddle hanging. And it makes me really think, there's this George Lakehoff down at UC Berkeley. Up, up, he's up at UC Berkeley, talks about how you frame things, right? And he sort of, he, he talks about children growing up in different families, more of authoritarian view and sort of what that means. I'm curious to know how we, we, we sell people on this. Like I, I think people hear safety and they hear lots of different things. I, 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 my view of it is much more nuanced now that I am in this space to see the connection to emotional health and why we redirect kids. But I, I'm just wondering, how, how do we think about that? Like how do we, how do we have a difficult conversation with folks saying, this isn't a political thing? But this is just like a, a better way to support all children. I'm curious to know about that. And I apologize for my big questions.
And if you're talking specifically about restorative, it's investment in people. It's believing in people to be able to change and take accountability. And when we have in our school community, a place where all people belong and there's a space for you and we allow people to then share why they belong there or what harm they caused and feel safe about that, that's what's important. We can discipline and we can exclude young people from school. We can suspend them and they're gonna stay at home to do what, right? And so the important part is the teaching. So if you really look at restorative practices, there's a large part in reflection and being able to then own up and speak about what was done, not just to you, but to other people. And to really start building relationships where, where what you say matters, but also the role that you play is, you're impacting other people. So we believe that our school community is really inclusive of everyone, then we have to create a space for that. And so the reason why I'm bought into restorative, because you're right. We grew up in different cultures and societies where it's authoritative and you're always being told what to do. But if you really believe that young people are wise and resourceful, then we have to allow them the opportunity to also do that and be that. And like what was stated earlier was restorative doesn't mean that you don't hold high expectations and high accountability. What we need to do though is provide a safe space for people to do that. And when you do that, then that also relays and pours out to just creating a safe environment. So that's what's important is allowing people to really reflect and own up to and really connect with other people.
I, I appreciated that you talked about Latin and the sort of the origins of discipline, meaning learning. My grandmother, Pat Sekuziak, may she rest in peace, graduate of Boston Latin, who's very disappointed that I didn't learn Latin, would be very proud of you. But when you think about what discipline means versus what criminality means. And I, I, I think in the school environment oftentimes we get confused or I would say the public gets confused about what those things are. So could you maybe distinguish that for, for me and also when does it intersect? And when, when do we, you know, when we talk about accountability, when does it cross a certain line? And what you were saying, Nick, was it doesn't cross the line that, that often from, from what I can tell. So I'm hoping you can kind of speak to how we philosophically think about those two things.
And I will add, you know, discipline and restorative doesn't mean that there's no consequences. And so we all redefine, we define that differently. And discipline with disciple also is, again, it's teaching and learning and really being able to practice something where you have self-discipline, self-regulation. So that's really where the word comes from. When you think about punitive discipline and just the system that we're in, think about the core and what it was founded on. We, we talk about a lot of the like colonial discipline and the, the definition of what that is, right? And so we have to redefine that. We have to see it as multifaceted. And, and it does not, and restorative doesn't mean that it does not include consequences.
Yeah, yeah.
And then attempt to be responsive to both questions because I think they're, they're linked is that, you know, the, the start of restorative practices is really, they're tribal practices, right? And so when you think of, I mean, we're as attached but yet detached as a society. You know, we've grown so large, but if we envision ourselves as we should, no matter what the size of society, that we all need each other, like that survival is dependent on each other, that even if someone is sent off, they're not, they're not, they're not gone. They're not far away. They're, they're right there. And so, you know, what restorative practices that we've, as we've mentioned, this is kind of part of like, you know, let's say the cell as you're talking to folks is that everyone's important. In education code, there is no, you know, for lack of a better way to say this, there's, there's no death penalty. You know, if a student creates, or sorry, if a student commits the most egregious act outlined in education code and is expelled, they will be back to us. They have the, they have the legally protected right to come back to us. So, you know, if, if through that example alone, and I've said a few things, it's that we have to be really focused on the growth. We have to be focused on the repair. And because we, there, there is no throwing away of people. We shouldn't take that philosophical approach. We always have to look at it as we share in some responsibility. And a final piece, just to lift it up is, is that it takes courage to sit in space with someone who's harmed you. It takes courage to open up about the impact it's had on you. And I really think that's where we're challenged. You know, we're, we're challenged in this work. We oftentimes find people that made mistakes, more often than not, that are willing, like they're willing to take accountability. They have really good ideas about how to make things right, how to own up for what they've done. And what is so critical is that you have a wounded person who's, who's courageous enough at times, sometimes, but willing to come and sit in space and speak to what, what they've experienced and be willing to receive, so to speak, the medicine because we can punish the heck out of someone. We see it in our judicial system. They can, they can get time. They can get a financial penalty. They can get all the things, right? But, but what the medicine is often is not that. It doesn't, that, that oftentimes doesn't solve how victims are feeling. And they're constantly yearning for it and you see it in sometimes the anger and frustration that they're, they're pointing at. You know, the investigators involved or what have you. And, you know, I might be a little bit down the rabbit hole here, but I just think it's all indicative of like why it is we need to be doing this work and really bought into this work.
I just have one more question and then I will pontificate just a little bit. But I, I, I talk regularly with my own kids about how they feel in terms of safety at school. And I'm curious to know, we have some survey mechanisms that you referred to. How do we listen to kids about what they're scared, scared of? I've had some really critical conversations with my kids about guns in school. They are terrified. So I'm wondering how we kind of identify issues and have those type of conversations. And then after that, I'll pontificate.
Thank you for the question. I, I want to point to the work of our anti-hate language kind of internal team and the work that they did, extensive work, I believe in the spring and some in the beginning of the fall, which has not been very long. But around engaging students and families around what they feel safe or don't, the ways in which they feel safe or don't feel safe. A lot of time and energy went into, they can't even call them focus groups because it's a community, right? That our internal team did so much work around really creating safe places for people to talk about what they're really afraid of. And it's often not, it's often not the scary incident. It's often the daily, we call it spirit murder. I gotta quote that and help me with the author. But it's the daily breaking down of someone's personhood that is happening in our schools for our African-American kids. And that's what the kids said, it's what the families say, it's what administrators are saying. We hear that. We have to respond. So it's about creating those safe spaces where people can really talk what they're afraid of. And it's often not the thing we think it is. Firearms, obviously very scary, but what we hear from our communities when we really take the time to listen deeply is a daily thing. It's a daily fear around their personhood, their identity, their emotional safety on a campus. So I would just put that out as a way to advocate. We've done, I know the board has done listening campaigns. Those are really important. Going to the PTA meetings, hearing from those families. All the meetings that happened that aren't PTA meetings, at the soccer fields. I know, I see you, Mr. Kuziak, all over the place in our town because we're in town too. So those, all those ways that we can listen to families and make it safe for them to really speak. I think that's really where we need to put, put our time and energy to be able to hear it and then take action. That committee did a really, really deep community work and continue to do it. So I wanted to put that forward as an excellent practice.
Two things to that. One is Kelvin. Because remember the Healthy Kids Survey is every other year. So now Kelvin is something we could do on an ongoing basis, which is really exciting. And that, remember, came about because of our CSE's work. Remember a couple of years back, we talked about special education and all of that and we had disproportionality. So again, we use these challenges as, as to help us grow. So Kelvin is a new tool that we could actually use to ask a lot of questions, to get feedback from kids on an ongoing basis. I also wanted to say, when we collect like behavior referrals through SUISS, it's about seeing what we need to do to support kids and the kind of behavior, behaviors we see. It's also about our behavior, checking ourselves. Like there have been times where we're like, why are these kinds of kids are getting that? And then we go back and see what's up here with the adult, right? So it's, it's both looking at our behavior as well as kids' behavior. I, I, I just, you know, I keep thinking about the, the relationship we have with our community partners. And I think oftentimes to your point, people are like, well, why aren't kids getting, you know, arrested? Why aren't kids being kicked out of school? It's because there are only certain things that you really, there are certain things where required to report and, and have removed.
Do that when we have to.
We do that when we have that. But that's not what happens most of the time. And I love what you said. When you ask kids, it's not that, I, I'm not making comments about gun safety or any of that. But that's not what they're talking about. They're talking about, how do I feel safe? How do I feel like I belong here? How do I stay away from this person, this kind of behavior? So just, I, I want to say a couple of things about our social workers and interns. So because we have such an amazing group under this leadership right here is why we get eight interns, which means we steal from other districts. They come to us because they want to be in a place that looks like this, that they get the kind of support we have here. When I tell people we have 11 social workers and then eight or 10 interns, they're like, you're taking all the interns. Well, those interns want to come to where they can learn the best and they're welcome. Like at Canyon and we'll go and do a little tour at their new wellness center. It's absolutely beautiful. Thanks to Ms. Sharon Truequince and Erin and Suzie. But it's because they have their own space. When I remember eight, nine years ago, our Eden Counseling was in a little closet. They had no space. Again, the investment that you've put into this matters. One last thing I want to say, Ms., our trustee Raymond said something about Stefan. This is what makes me. This is what makes me really happy. It isn't just the teacher, the principal, that it's every single person on campus that impacts kids. And his love for kids, for the school, for children is just obvious. It doesn't have to be me as a superintendent. It can be everybody that needs to wrap their arms around our kids. And that's what we see. Again, thank you to this amazing team we have here. I know you have things.
Yeah, sorry, just two little things. I, I won't be as on fire as I was at Stanton, but I, I feel like I need to say this. One of the things that really frustrates me is how the outside community, how parents and guardians replicate misinformation through various sources. And I, you talked about digital citizenship. Maybe there's an opportunity for us to talk about digital citizenship for the parents and guardians of our children in our school. Some of the online spaces are toxic. They, they are reprehensible, they spread misinformation, they identify children. And I oftentimes tell people, we owe a very different duty. We have a much higher standard of care because we got little people. We got like people that we have to protect. And it really is unnerving when I see people behaving in such poor ways online. So I wonder how we might be a part of that solution. And I do really appreciate, Nick, how you mentioned the relationship with the Alameda County Sheriff Office. I'm a politician, so I'm going to say this. I do believe leadership matters and I'm so happy we have a different sheriff there. I think that has had an absolute transformative effect on our relationship with them. You can see it, you can see it. And I see in the engagement, we're not getting threatening letters from the sheriff's office anymore. And I think what we're seeing is developing a true partnership. And I think it's important. Again, I know sometimes the political winds don't, aren't popular to say that we're supporting kids who want to go into law enforcement. But darn it, I think that's great. We have a lot of law enforcement families that live in this community. And if people want to be in law enforcement and we're providing a pathway for them to explore that, that's great, because you know what? I'm hoping that by being a part of our community, they're going to be the right type of law enforcement that has the empathy and support that we want. So I really appreciate all the work you guys do. Thank you so much for being here. Go to our next information item. Update on 2024 summer facilities and M O G projects.
Can I just start? Okay, good evening. So yeah, so I'll go first and then Erin will follow. I cover the facilities portions, no longer Measure G. But I decided we found a nice picture or caricature. Try to include everyone. I know. Mm-hmm. It happens. So just updates on things we've been doing for the summer. For the high school, we, you know, we're making improvements to the mat room and the 600 hall. We've been trying to focus efforts on, you know, all the spots that we still have. And this one, where, you know, we refinished the floors, redid the ceilings, redid the lights and painted. We have new window shades. We have this huge fan that helps with ventilation and cooling and also helps with heat too, if you circulate it slowly in the winter, brings the heat down. And, and we're, you know, it's still a work in progress. We're working on getting the mirrors in and the ballet bars and getting new mats for the wrestling team. So, you know, I wanted to show some pictures of how the room looks as of now. And then in the 700 building, we went through and did a bunch of the science classrooms. We did the flooring and the hallways. So we're still not done, this kind of part one or phase one of what we're going to do. We're going to go back and do more flooring and do more painting and different things for the 700. So, and I think it's turned out very nicely. We have new lockers that we've put in the 600 hall and along the 400 hall to help, just kind of refreshing.
So you call it 600, you don't call it goo? Have you ever noticed it looks like goo? Sorry. You should just look at the font. It's really, I always, my son has glasses there. I'm like, are you going to goo? Sorry.
And then we did extra painting for the gym and 600 and 700 halls. You know, kind of really trying to brighten up the quad, right? And I think that really has helped bring out all the great murals that the schools has done. And we're also working on a mural for that gold wall that we've decided to do for that.
Thanks for clarifying there. We, that was a heated conversation in our home about where the Trojans went. Yeah.
Yes, yes, it's coming. The, we've been, Erin's actually been working with the muralist and we have, you know, his proposed design and it looks really great. And it's taken a while because I think he hurt his wrists. So, but he, he came and got some samples of the paint that we've used so that he can coordinate the right colors. And so, yeah, that's, that's in the works. It's not just going to be a blank wall. Then we have 300, you know, between 300 and 400 hall. I think I've shown pictures of like different progress shots, but I was going through and I'm like, you know, haven't done like a nice finished shot for you. And, you know, this is the finished space with the lockers. You know, you can kind of see them under the canopy. We also, on the 300 side, you know, there was this deck that was out there that I know the guitar class was using. What we did was remove the deck and paved the area with concrete. We redid the door so that it looks really nice and it really connects well. And I hear the students really like it. And I think Erin's also, will show you another part of, as we're kind of starting to get into the other spaces, you know, what we're doing in the block two. You know, moving, we have the scoreboards, you know? We have the stadium scoreboard that we redid. This is a full video one so that the school can really utilize this for a lot of different activities. And also, one of the things the staff had talked about was, you know, we're highlighting their broadcasting and getting the kids involved and like working and how to use it and possible also for fundraising, different activities. And the softball one, we actually, when we, because we were working on the stadium scoreboard and the, we're working directly with the manufacturer. And the manufacturer at the time, the sales director says like, oh, we actually have this promotion going that you actually can get, you know, a certain percentage of the price. And essentially it got us a free scoreboard. So we ended up being able to replace the softball one, softboard, softball, board. And, and it was in dire need of replacement because I think that was really, they were getting to a point with the softball that they couldn't get the parts to replace that one. So it was a good opportunity that we're able to do. This is the ADA ramp that was in construction over summer for the three portables that we landed for the dual immersion program. So that, here's a picture of the portables. And we also put in a new set of stairs from Vanoy Ave, that's for fire access. And then in Chabot, we were able to help with renovating for a new TK classroom. Because one of the things, you know, we worked on was, and, you know, we had met with, you know, our whole team and with ed services and, and special ed in time, in terms of like, because, you know, we, we don't have that much funds. We, you know, we don't have Measure G. We can't build something, we've applied for grants, you know? And now it's like, okay, what can we do with the spaces we have? What can we juggle around, what opportunities? And I think this was a really good example of what we were able to partner and do, right? Because this is, we looked at all the little nooks and crannies. And this was room four and five was actually a classroom way back in the day. And it was subdivided for offices. And I think maybe an RTI and different spaces. And so we looked at, it's like, oh, can we move? Can we create, you know, offices somewhere else and make this the classroom again? So we did, there was a wall, we took down the wall, did some painting. And, you know, we have classroom again. And this is the room next to, you know, this is in the front office. The principal's office had like a little side alcove area. So then we created.
That's where we used to store Chabot.
So we put in doors so that, and a wall so that creates, you know, that space for counseling. And at Independent in the lower lot, we extended the sidewalk and created, you know, a bigger pathway. And redid some of the striping for pickup and drop off. I think I've heard really good things about, from the parents, about, you know, that it's so much wider. Oh, I can really, you know, expand or I can really spread out, you know? You can actually have two people walking next to each other. Because before, the little lane, it was probably like two feet wide. And whenever some, you would walk, if someone's coming towards you, like one of you has to hop off the sidewalk. And so, you know, I think this was really nice. This is the lower side, which connects to the church parking lot. And where actually a lot of kids and parents drop off.
I was going to say, when we had our meeting with our traffic group, so Mr. Doogie, Mr. Taylor and Ms. Tangan, they were really excited about seeing this. And also up on the, that you did last year.
Oh, yes, yes.
The parking lot at Independent, because it was not, it's so much safer now. It's, and this kept coming up before, so they were really excited about seeing this.
Yes, yeah, this is part two. Last year, we worked on the upper entrance and now we're looking at the lower one, what opportunities we could do. This one's a little tricky because it's more sloped. And Stanton, we did some front office memorization. We got new furniture for the front office reception, the secretary. I think that was much needed. The partition that was there, I think it's decades old. Needed, it was at the end of its useful life. And, and then we did, we did the carpet, painted. And so it created more inviting spaces for our families when they come and workspaces for our staff. And then this last one is, it's a progress shot. I was able to get in to do the finish. I think some of the finish shots, you can actually see with the plumbing. And Erin's presentation was, we worked, you know, in another collaboration partnership with the adult school and maintenance to help them with the project, with redoing room nine, as they call their cooking classroom. So we helped them redo, get quotes with their funds of the casework and the plumbing and so that they can do more culinary and expand their adult learning and also for their adults with disabilities too. That is all I have. Do you want to?
Questions?
So Erin, and then.
Oh, Erin.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so if you look back through my presentations, you will notice that I always start with an irrigation slide. And all I do is change the pictures and the sites. Because every summer, we are chasing irrigation issues on our aging field infrastructure. So we put in a lot of work trying to make sure that we're addressing things quickly so that we're saving water and keeping our fields green. So it's, it's an ongoing battle and it'll probably be first on my slideshow next year. So we had, we had some issues at Stanton and at Proctor this summer that we were able to get addressed. So we'll, we'll see what pops up next year. So this is some plumbing work that we did. On the left, you'll see our contribution to room nine at Sea Base. And I'd like to point out, since I've taken on this role, I've learned from my colleagues across the state that a lot of places, facilities and maintenance have a very adversarial relationship. And it's, well, you guys built this terrible thing that now I have to maintain. And we work very hard here to have a collaborative relationship, to work together, to get the best bang for our buck. This was one where we stepped in and assisted with the plumbing so that they could stretch facilities money a little further in some other areas and really get a better finish result out of the project. And then over on the right, you will see, that is a very short sink. That is for a classroom at Alma Preschool that had standard height sinks. And they had this huge box that the kids had to climb up onto to wash their hands. So we lowered that sink down so that they can walk right up to it and, and use it without any, any kind of safety issues with climbing on a box. What I didn't include in this is that we lowered the sink in the other restroom, not knowing that it was a staff restroom. So now we have to go back and raise that up to the correct height. They have two very short sinks. So, yeah, they, they can sit down. So we'll, we'll be fixing that for them. Thankfully, there's also a kitchen in that classroom so they're able to wash their hands in the sink for now. And this is also room one. I wasn't able to get a finished shot in time to include it in this presentation, but this classroom turned out really well. For those of you that don't know, I started with this district 20 years ago as a para at Alma Preschool. And the floor in room one needed to be replaced then. And this summer, we actually were able to replace it. It's absolutely beautiful. And this was, what's that? So this, this was another collaborative project. I was doing the flooring and Sharon said, well, if you're doing the flooring, why don't I paint? And I said, perfect. So they got new flooring in the whole classroom, fresh coat of paint. It looks fantastic. You can see on the right, that was the floor in the restroom prior to being redone. And it's got this beautiful gray vinyl floor now. So that was a much needed rehab and it just looks phenomenal now. And then moving outside at Alma, this one is really, really cool. This was done in collaboration with the state preschool. So those musical instruments, they purchased and we installed them for them. I believe they're purchasing a few more because they've been so popular that they want to expand what they have out there. And then this garden, what you're looking at was parking. So I stole some parking spots from the adult school, but I'm going to give them back somewhere else in the parking lot this weekend, actually. And I created this really beautiful garden area for them. So put in the bark, moved the plants over. They had this in the driveway on the side of the building. So it's a much better space for a garden, there's shade, there's some trees and it's just really, really beautiful. Now we're moving to Canyon. So Parveen mentioned the, the meeting about the traffic. So if you recall, in the spring, we had the traffic study with the consultant. And one of the things that they pointed out was the underutilization of the Canyon drop off area in their parking lot. And so when we looked at that, it was really difficult to tell what the intention of the lanes was. Everything was faded, it was confusing. So we, we made it very clear and we got some help from the site. They sent out some instructions to parents, making it clear, you pull through the middle lanes where the arrows are, you pull into the green to drop off. And then those white paths are the walkways. I'm still working to add some delineators on the left side of that path on the left so that there's coverage on both sides for the students to walk in the middle. But it's, it's seen promising results so far. We got a lot of confusion the first day when people showed up and were like, wait a second, what is going on here? This is not what I remember from last year. And then this one is really cool. For those of you that remember, in that picture on the right, there were these very old dilapidated wooden gates at the front entrances. at the front entrances of Canyon that went across the end of that cinder block wall. And during the school day, those gates would be wide open and anybody could just walk right through into campus. So what we did is we brought the fence in so that people have to go to the office. They cannot go directly into campus. So at the back, those gates open up, they're double opening gates. So before school and after school, they can be open for easy access for the kids to come and go. And then on the right side, there are the crash bar emergency gates for an emergency exit over there. So this is the high school quad. And I loved what Sharon did with the 300 and 400. And I was a little jealous, so I decided that I was going to do something beautiful at the high school too. So. Exactly, exactly. So if any of you remember, this was just dirt. It would be a muddy mess in the winter. It would be used during the summer, but kids would get dirty, they'd kick up dust, and it was just a mess. So this summer, we put in the artificial turf and we added that ramp so that it's accessible. It used to just be you'd have to step over the wall to get up there. So we made it accessible and we made it a much cleaner environment. I was down there yesterday and it was just packed with kids sitting out there. So it was really cool to see it in action. And so this is Polymaris. And I would highly encourage all of you to go and check this out in person because these pictures don't do it any justice. So this was also born out of the traffic study and looking at how to better utilize the space in the Polymaris parking lot. So where these pavers are was just dirt and there are the historic foundation stones from the original schoolhouse there. And then at the end of the parking lot was just a lot of empty space. And they were using that as their kind of gathering area for their pickup. So I worked with a landscaper to design this. And you can't really see it in the pictures. In the top picture on the right, just past that center section, you can kind of see a line of those original stones. So we really worked to kind of accentuate and highlight the original stones while doing something that kind of fits the space and gives them a waiting area that's more centrally located. And then we were able to add six parking spots at the end of the parking lot to try and get some of the traffic off of Polymaris Road so that there aren't families walking down the shoulder of the road in the mornings. But this, the pictures don't do it any justice. You really should go see it in person. And this is the Creekside Lower Fields. So Sharon did the, the beautiful renovation of the Creekside Field. And everybody was chomping at the bit to get out there and kind of tore it up a little bit. And so I had to do some restoration this summer. It was closed all summer, it's actually still closed right now for a few more weeks, just to let the grass fully establish. But if I had done a before and after picture, you would have been very sad. So I just stuck with the beautiful green, fresh grass. I know they're very eager to get out there, but we don't want to destroy the grass while it's still trying to fully establish. So it's going to be a few more weeks and then they'll be able to get out there and really enjoy the restored field. And so this is a, a list of the things that I didn't really have pictures of. I won't read through everything, but just to, to give you an idea of, of a lot of the things that we had going on this summer. And I probably forgot a lot of things too, trying to put together this list. And it would not be one of my presentations if there wasn't a formatting error from when I submitted it to when it ended up here. There were arrows on the left side. I promise you, there were not those, those blank rectangles. So this summer.
We wouldn't have known if you hadn't said anything.
It's that last one. Me nuts, so. So the, the operations department worked really hard this summer. We, we had one less week of summer than we have in the past. So trying to fit in the same amount of work in a shorter time period. There was some scrambling at the end, but they, they have pulled it off and everything looked great for the first day of school. We got a lot of compliments. People thought that we had replaced some of the gym floors because they did such a great job refinishing them. So everybody worked really hard and was very collaborative, worked really well together to not only support summer school and the community rentals and everything, but still managed to get all of the regular summer cleaning done. And then moving on to the transportation department. So I love this first one. It's so difficult to, to pull this off and especially five years in a row. So a lot of credit to Tracy Vieira, our transportation supervisor, who works very hard with our transportation staff to make sure that we're in compliance and has been able to go five consecutive years with no violations. So we're very, very proud of that. It's always a busy summer, making sure that we have our bus routes and our special education van routes in place. We're, we're transporting for the summer camps and for summer school. This year, just in time for the start of school, we upgraded a van driver to a bus driver. And this slide is now out of date because we have two van drivers in training to become bus drivers now. So we're very excited, we're hoping in the coming months that we'll be able to get them onboarded as bus drivers and expand our transportation. Last school year, we transported 326 students on the bus. This year, we started at 400. And so if we're able to upgrade those other two, we will not have any wait lists.
So would that be a mid-year route change or additional supplemental service?
So that would just be adding the kids that are on the waitlist. We'd be able to get them routed on the route that they had selected. We might look at shifting routes during winter break if there's a way to optimize things. So that's something that we're always looking at while being mindful of the fact that a mid-year change is very difficult on the families. So it's, it's always finding that balance between transporting as many as possible and having routes that work for families and also trying to keep things consistent so that people know what to expect. And we have four bus drivers, hoping to up that number. Our van driver number is out of date now because we had two more start this week. I believe we have another one starting next week. So big thanks to Dr. Zamora to keep sending us people, getting us fully staffed. So like I mentioned, that last number, 348, is also out of date now. So we're up to 400. And then with the additional van drivers, that 80 passengers will also increase. So we're very happy to continue to grow and be able to transport more students every year. Got to add my thank you and question slide.
But you just said it.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, trustee Whitaker and then trustee Raymond.
I just have to say, this healthy competition and collaboration going on is so innovative. Like you're creating safe spaces that are also inclusive, but really useful spaces. Like kids get to do different stuff. That's really cool. Well, thank you. No questions. Good job.
I actually never, it never would have occurred to me that these two departments would have an adversary relationship. As I, I, I always see the two of you as like this awesome team that comes to share these really cool projects that you're doing at our schools. So, yeah, I agree with that. I have to say, I was really glad to see when I was reviewing, you know, getting ready for our meeting, that there had been work in the parking lots and a couple of our parking lots to improve flow of traffic and safety for our kids when they're unloading and loading up. And you mentioned the traffic study. And I don't know if this is the right time to ask, can we have a presentation on the traffic study? Or some kind of discussion of that soon as a board, I don't know.
So, so we did it, the traffic study that was done gave us recommendations for us to do. And then it had recommendations for the county. We've been meeting with our small group, parent group. And they, so they've looked at some of the things that we need to get done and can get done. Some of them require DSA approval and actually changes. So we could probably just share all of those things, like which ones we can do and which ones we can't, we can do a presentation. The, the county ones, we're still working on maybe updating because we got some really good feedback from the, the community members who are on our team that we want to see how we can share those also with the county. And then we were planning on actually asking for a separate meeting with the county about traffic and pickup and drop off. So we'll, we'll do, we'll talk about doing a presentation.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm also really, really glad to hear that we've got more bus drivers and that we can actually like start to accommodate more students, you know, who need rides. I will just say that the insane driving that I've been seeing around our schools this year is it's, it's worse than I've ever seen. So the more we can do, I think as a district to get our kids on buses and things, the better. Because it's always been bad. And I have seen some things that really just like I could not quite believe they happened. And without witnesses in my car saying, yes, that happened. You know, it's, it's pretty egregious what's going on on the roads around our schools during these drop off pickup times. So this is, this is a great development. And I also just really liked that you took the time and effort and energy to lower the sink. I think, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, everyone belongs here. And, you know, for a child, their first introduction to school is they can't even reach the sink. What is that telling them, you know? So I just, that's lovely. And yeah, I always love seeing all the great things that are happening. I love the yellow of the wall up there and I like the minimalism of that clock, but you know, it may all be nice too. Thanks.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
I just wanted to thank you for fixing up the, the, between the buildings at Cast Valley High to make them look much better. I've been looking at those dirt paths and the little windy road. And, you know, when there's people on there, you're, you have to go on the dirt, right? You, you had to walk on the dirt. And if it was muddy, you were just getting mud all over your shoes. That's the way it was. So thank you so much for working on those. It looks so much better. It's just going to make the whole campus feel better. And keeping the trees, great. Yeah, such a great job. And the buses, getting more bus drivers, really great. Or, you know, van drivers who are turning into bus drivers. Because everybody going in their own personal car is to, to all of our campuses is a big problem. I know I had my daughter on the bus to go to Canyon Middle School. And even though it cost a bit of money and it was subsidized anyway, it was so worth it. I mean, the amount of time to go up there and wait through all that traffic and then, you know, and do that twice a day and have to be at work at a certain time was, it was really hard. So the bus really did help a lot. So I hope we can keep improving that situation. I wish buses weren't so doggone expensive.
Thank you again for being here. So as a baseball dad, Proctor Field, do we think that the type of changes that have been made there with irrigation are going? I, I know like low pressure has been an issue, which that, that, at least that was my understanding. Do we have a long-term fix so the, the baseball fields will be usable-ish going into the future? Or maybe not. It's okay. Never mind.
So the.
Sorry, that wasn't meant to be a gotcha. Sorry, sorry.
Fixes will definitely help. So the leak that we showed is actually way out in the very back. So it was probably going on for a while before anyone noticed it because it was like way in the back corner. So that could have been affecting the pressure. But I know that that neighborhood in general has an issue with pressure. So we are looking at adding some pumps to boost the pressure. We have that at Jensen Ranch because there's not enough pressure to run the sprinklers there. So that is something that we are looking at. But definitely planning for the future, some field rehabilitation work is definitely something we're looking at.
Appreciate that. And then I would just say, as a Creekside parent, you know those little parking spaces that are right next to the red zone that are still striped as parking spaces? I'm just wondering if Creekside will be, will be getting sort of a upgrade like Canyon. I thought that looked really nice, but there's a side where it's sort of like, it makes you think you can park there, but you really can't.
So, yeah, those were actually blacked out because that's a fire lane. They're not supposed to be parking spaces. But we just, we just have to continually paint black over them because it, it wears off with cars driving over it. And then you can see through it, yeah.
And I do like the, you know, the attention towards like safety in the morning. I, I think there's a really a good opportunity with the county to like talk about the higher corridor, particularly higher and center. I've just, when I drive through it every morning, dropping off at Creekside, I'm like, if they just made this small tweak here and did this there, it could really improve traffic flow. And I, I think it's also come out on us to look at like, are our school start times, you know, balanced in the right way to, to help reduce pressure on that corridor? But I, I hope we can maybe have some creative thinking about working with the county and other agencies. How could we improve that? Thank you for being here. Our next item is an action item to approve the personnel report. I'm going to be the first motion.
I will second.
Wait, trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker. Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, it passes. Now let's go on to board member comments and reports. Trustee Raymond.
Okay, let's see. I guess you could say I was representing the district at the Labor Council dinner last Friday. It was a really, really great event. I was invited by Liz Ortega's office to, to come. And there were probably about a thousand people there from labor unions all over the Bay Area. You know, it was, it was a great, great evening celebrating the work in organizing power of unions. So and as, as we know, I, I love our union partners, so it was an honor to attend. Speaking of union partners, I got to have a nice coffee with our new CBT president also last week. That was a great conversation. I popped into Vanoy thinking I was going to attend the presentation of these Years of Service Awards, but no one had it on their calendar. But, but I got to have a really nice chat with Bob, Ms. Huer, who is the front office secretary at Vanoy. Also got to see Stephant, who is just a gift to our school. And second grade teacher extraordinaire Shelley Schuman, who also came in while I was there. And we got to talk for quite a while and that was a nice, nice impromptu visit to Vanoy. And, yeah, I also was at Creekside Back to School Night primarily as a parent, but did get to have a good conversation with our new teacher at Creekside, Ms. August, who is teaching both ethnic studies and art. We talked a bit about the ethnic studies curriculum or sort of what they're, and, and how to get that program off the ground. And I'll be at CVHS tomorrow night for Back to School Night as well. There is a, I think this dovetails into the conversation we're having about safety tonight and building relationships in the community. There is a cream puff with COP event coming up. I don't have the date off the top of my head. I think it's, is this coming maybe Saturday or?
Yeah, we shared it on social media, but Amy can look.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's at the market.
At the marketplace. AXO is going to be present and they're there to talk with the community. So I'll probably pop in and say hello. That's all I got for now. Thanks.
Trustee Whitaker.
Thank you. I actually, last night, I was at a board policy subcommittee with trustee Raymond. She was there as well. So that's what, that's how I represent the district, but I have not represented the district otherwise.
Trustee Howard.
Just a couple of things. I was at Marshall with Parveen to give out the service awards. And also at the African-American family celebration at Stanton. Weaker, whatever. That was really good, much better this year in the sense that all the families are involved rather than just the elementaries as it was in the past, although those were great events as well. So two sort of announcements. One is that the Rotary Club is, the grants from the Rotary Club are due September 15th. So if anybody wants to turn one in. And finally, you all know, I think Parveen mentioned the Fall Festivals in a couple of weeks. And finally, you all know, I think Parveen mentioned the Fall Festivals in a couple of weeks. The Madrigals will open the Fall Festival again this year. So that's all I have.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
I just have two things. There was a Cast Valley Education Foundation meeting. They did talk about when they want to have the Spring for Ed or whatever they might call it. And yeah, it's going to be late April, early May. I think there were like three dates given. And then I was able yesterday to go to Creekside for the Years of Service for Teachers Awards.
Trustee Whitaker.
I just wanted to mention something I, I forgot to mention it before, but I think it's great to stay here. I want to say thank you so much to Amy for putting appointments on our calendars well in advance, especially for the end of year ceremonies. Because I know that I work full time and I'm very busy and it's very hard to get ahold of me and I'm very apologetic about it. But having that in advance helps set me up for success to be able to attend. So Amy, just thank you so much, really appreciate it.
My turn, so I joined the superintendent at the Parent Leadership Council. I'm always impressed with all of our parent groups coming together in support of our schools. I visited Stanton Elementary School, which is always inspires me to show up at the first meeting of the year. And there's so many people there. And we tried our best to convince the TK and kindergarten parents to, you know, sign away all their rights and make sure they did lots of good things for the school communities. I too, I actually went to the Creekside Back to School Night. It was great to see Ivana in action. She looks so happy, it makes me so. She is a fantastic assistant principal. She's been so supportive of my family as well. And I just, I'm loving seeing her do so well there. I did one other thing and I'm forgetting what I did. And I think that's, that's okay. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I do want to acknowledge so much of my time here has been linked to losing my mom. And I, it's just, it's, for me, it's important to just acknowledge that this was the fourth year for passing. And I miss her and my service here has a lot to do with what I experienced with her growing up. And that's what drives me to want to be here. And I just want to thank you all for your patience with me. And I think you're fantastic colleagues and I want to thank our staff here and all that you do for us. And I want to just say we're adjourned, have a great night. Bye.